All right, we'll go ahead and start the Ford County Commission meeting. This is meeting for February twentieth, twenty twenty-four. This is meeting twenty twenty-four oh five. We have all three commissioners in attendance. If you would please stand with me, I'll do a prayer, followed by a question of the day. Father of heaven, just want to thank you so much for this beautiful day and the beautiful weather that you have outside. I would like to ask that you continue to bless Ford County and please watch over the safety, the security of the employees and the people here in the community. And Father, just help the Commission to continue to think with a community-minded mindset and definitely help us with our decision-making and the openness and communication with everyone here. Just want to thank you so much for your blessing and your guidance and wisdom over us. And thank you so much for the services that we provide and the safety of those employees there. Thank you for all your blessings and Jesus' name.
Amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so first up, we need to amend the agenda to add a third executive session at the end. So I make a motion to amend the agenda for that. Second. So we have a motion in seconds. We're adding another executive session.
Excuse me, I can't hear you.
Speaker up here. All right, so with a motion second, I'll go ahead and call a vote to add an executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up before you is a consent agenda. This is for the approval of meeting minutes twenty twenty-four oh four, a credit card statement, the approval of additions and abatements, and there are several on here. And then a cereal malt beverage application over Noya Choa, New Business's Brant Joe, El Napoleon, Napolea? I don't know if I'll get that one right. All right, but I would actually like to hear from...
Carolyn?
Yeah, I was looking to see if she's... Carolyn? Yep. Can we just go over the additions and abatements, Secretary? Hey, couldn't see you behind the door here. That's all right.
Now, we have several. So... Of course, the personal property charges are still getting in. Some of those, quite a few of those that are coming in where people either forgot to file something or maybe they forgot to sign their additions, and so we're doing some abatements on those. We've had some oil and gas that are some payment under protest appeals that we completed. So we had to make some adjustments there.
And the one for oil and gas that's, it says twenty nineteen. Is that twenty nineteen to now or just going back to that one here?
I apologize, I didn't check that one out thoroughly enough. I'll have to, I'll have to double check and find out if I can get it. But I did get that one, we sent you an email about that.
Sure, no, that's fine. Any questions? I don't.
I don't either, but everyone's a negative, right? You know what, that never reminds me of when my wife was spending my money on a low-end negative.
All right, well, I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. One second. All right, with a motion second, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Next up is approval for the claims for payments. This is the amount of seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty cents. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the claims for payments presented.
I second it.
All right, with a motion second, any further discussion? Hearing done, I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. We're now to the point of open public comments. Please limit it to five minutes per individual, fifteen minutes per topic. Final action may be deferred until the next county commission meeting unless an emergency situation does exist. If you would like to come in front of the commission and discuss something with us, for free, the microphone is open. Just tell us who you are and what you'd like to discuss.
Robert Schwanger, I live on one eighteen Road, North Bloom. I'm concerned about the Bloom Road, how many holes we have in it, potholes. I showed the picture, water holes. The road needs to crown off so the water can get off of it. There is spots that's good, those the water gets off of, but there are spots that's got water standing in it. We've got rust on Wilburn Road, which the ditch is in the road now. And why you can't run a maintainer and drag enough dirt to fill the rust. It'll go down three times because you have roach to life, but you cannot drag enough dirt to fill the rust. It'll leave a barren spot where it don't gravel at all. And he deadheads, the other day he deadhead through Bloom, through West Bloom to the bytop that goes up to the roofers station over there. And north of it, the other day, deadhead to bareback, but he's always going by my place about two-thirty with the layup. The other day, he come down the road, laid all the way up, then the top north. And why, I don't know what kind of reports they put in, but get that maintainer guy say, hey, this hill right here south of my house, need some gravel on. And he report, little one down two miles south, and need some gravel on both sides of that bridge down south. What kind of reports he puts in to the county or what, before you guys even see these reports?
Yeah, man, that would go to a road bridge director position. I mean, they would be the ones that would take care of that, but...
And I had the engineer come down the other day and rode with me. I took him down through there and showed him everything. I've got pictures of water standing in the road to different places. And on Wilburn Road, over there by Cartis, there is a place in the road that is probably six, eight feet wide, that deep, that wide. I mean, because that is the road and there's no way you can see it. And I called my grandson the other day when he come to church. I said, you better slow down or you're in a little car here and it'll block you out. They created Bloom Road, probably for one eighteen, probably two or three times, and had to touch the Wilburn Road until the other day. Gentlemen, I just need some gravel on some of the hill. And some of the hills, some of the gravel needs like porcelain rock, they'll stay on that hill and it's gonna push the rock.
Thank you. All right, moving on, there's no unfinished business with Google Council, so I'll go to the county commissioner and report.
Mr. Chairman, we do have the bids in for the fuel. That's the first item on the agenda, fuel and results. The results that we have, it's two bidders this year as opposed to one last year. And we do have those in front of you. First bid is from AB Energy. The unleaded is seventy-five thousand gallons, it's two dollars and sixty-seven cents per gallon. The number two diet diesel for sixty-five thousand gallons is two dollars and eighty-seven cents. The number two clear diesel is three dollars and twelve cents, that's for sixty-five thousand gallons. The number one diesel, ten thousand, is forty cents over clear diet. Then you have Nusser, you got two sixty-seven for the unleaded, two seventy-five for the diet diesel, three oh one for the number two diesel. The number one diesel is three forty more and two fifteen. And all of those prices are better than last year. Looks like you're pretty close on... You're exactly the same on the unleaded for AB and Nusser both. And Nusser has a better price for the number two diet diesel, a better price for the number two clear diesel, and they're both about the same on the number one diesel.
Is, I don't know if I'm thinking about the number one diesel, clear and diet, the same way, but it says forty cents over. So if you do that on the, that would be on the two eighty-seven plus forty cents?
Yeah.
Okay. So that would be less at that point? Is that right? Or am I backwards? It'd be the number two.
I think this number in this column, they actually got it switched in relation to...
Those two, okay.
They're, I think they're taking forty cents over also.
Okay. No, that's correct. Okay.
So if you're looking for a recommendation for Madden, that would be to go with Nusser Oil.
Yeah. All right, I make a motion that we approve Nusser Oil for the supplier of the fuel for Ford County from March first through February twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-five.
Do you recommend who?
Nusser.
Thank you, I can't hear you. You're talking down to the desk, to the desk, you're just three feet.
I'll point to you, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you.
Second motion. All right, we have a motion in seconds. Any discussion? Hearing done, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd say a quick thank you to Executive Assistant Amy Stotter for kind of taking over this process and working with the new road bridge director, Brad Ross, trying to get all these things figured out. Without them, as busy as we've been, it would've been tough to get this done, so big shout-outs to all of them.
Yeah. The next three items are for planning the road bridge director, Melissa Ray.
I can't hear what he said, he's not talking like he's talking to the desk, desk to the diesel.
We're on to the planning and zoning. RNF Trucking? Yeah, just to go.
Gentlemen, you have the four-year resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twelve for RNF Trucking. This is for a truck repair shop that has been operating for the last three years and is located at one-one-two-nine-five-one-twelve Road. This is north of the Hillmar plant that's going up. The owner did not know about the county's regulations, but when he was notified, within a week, he started the process to obtain the conditional use permit. The truck repair shop will be open from nine to six, Monday through Friday, and nine to two on Saturdays. The owner has fifteen years of experience working on semi-trucks and promises there will be no truck traffic at night on one-twelve Road due to his business. He is hoping that as his shop grows, he will be able to take care of tires also. The staff report that's given to the zoning board show ten out of eleven factors are favorable. And by reviewing the Ford County Comprehensive Plan, I identified a total of four goals and six objectives that endorse this development. I could not uncover any goals or objectives that exposed any form of opposition towards it. I had only one inquiry concerning this conditional use and development plan, which was from Richland Township. And with the conditions listed below, the representative did not have any complaints. There was no one who spoke up in front of the zoning board against this conditional use. So on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, the Ford County Zoning Board reviewed the zoning case twenty twenty-three dash eleven. The board consisting of three members voted two in favor and zero opposed to recommend approval of the application for the conditional use and development plan. However, this recommendation comes with certain conditions that Mr. Rojas must adhere to. The applicant shall meet all applicable federal, state, and local laws and regulations. Light shall be directed so not to shine onto a public road or way of adjustment property. Comply with the development plan submitted. Tires must be disposed of monthly so not to accumulate. No more than twenty gallons of fuel shall be stored at this location. The condition of the lot must be maintained. No tires, truck parts, or trash shall be allowed to pile up outside. Access to the business shall be off Highway four hundred entrance to the one-twelve Road. The truck traffic shall not use the entrance to one-twelve Road off of Valeria Way when the entrance from the highway opens up. The tires, truck parts, or trash shall not be allowed to accumulate outside, and the yard shall be maintained. No more than three disabled vehicles are to be stored on this property at one time. Mr. Rojas is here in the audience if you'd like to, if you have any questions, but that is the end of my report.
Thank you. Zoe, we want to hear from Mr. Rojas.
Pretty straightforward for him.
Same. Commissioners, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four twelve as recommended by the zoning board.
I second it.
With a motion second, any further discussion on the topic? Hearing done, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Well, next is, you have the four-year resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirteen. This resolution is for a cell tower located on LJ Red Farms with the address of one-three-three-five-nine, Highway fifty-four, Buckman. This parcel is located approximately one point six miles east of Buckman on Highway fifty-four. Verizon is weighing up a three-hundred-foot self-supporting cell tower. Red Farms will be leasing a designated area measuring sixty feet by fifty feet along with necessary access utility easements for the proposed tower. To ensure security, the tower will be fully enclosed with a fenced area of fifty-eight feet by forty-eight feet. Access to the tower will be facilitated to the existing entrance off of US fifty-four with no additional modifications required. The staff report that was given to the zoning board showed eight out of eleven factors is a favorable, and upon reviewing the Ford County Comprehensive Plan, I identified two goals and four objectives that endorse this development. I could not uncover any goals or objectives that exposed, or expressed any form of opposition towards it. I had no inquiries concerning this conditional use and development plan, and there was no one who spoke up in front of the zoning board against this conditional use and development plan. On January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, the Ford County Zoning Board reviewed the zoning case twenty twenty-four dash zero-zero-one. The board consisting of three members voted two in favor and zero opposed to recommend approval of the application for the conditional use and development plan. However, this recommendation comes with certain conditions. The applicant shall meet all applicable federal, state, and local laws. No lighting shall be eliminated on the telecommunication tower except that which complies with and does not exceed the minimum FAA requirement. Follow and comply with the development plan. The Ford County reserves a right to rescind this conditional use upon any violation of county regulations or conditions ever made in this approval. Those shall be strict adherence to the Ford County zoning regulations, Article nineteen dash one oh four, which deals with the height of towers. A decommission plan will be provided and approved before construction begins. And all FAA regulations shall be fully complied with. And Mr. Red, and Representative Verizon is in the audience if you'd like to. If you have any questions, go then. And that's the end of my report.
Hearing done.
I make a motion to reapprove the zoning deal for the transit of LJ Rudd Tower.
I'll second. All right, we have a motion second to approve the Rudd Cell Tower. Any... Yeah, the resolution number is twenty twenty-four thirteen. Any further discussions? Hearing done, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, commissioners. The last one is Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one-four. This resolution is for an updated development plan for Alliance Center, which the owner is Brian Marshall, also known as Building Solutions. This parcel has the address of one-one-one-oh-six Saddle Road, which lies in the northeast corner of Highway two-eighty-three and Saddle intersection. Brian Marshall has been purchasing vehicles through his father, who owns a car lot. His father is retiring, and Brian would like the opportunity to continue the practice of buying and selling his own vehicles, being successful, and wants to do a car lot. I wanted to come back before the zoning board.
Makes sense. Appreciate that. All right, any further questions? Hearing done, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner. Next item was for IT Director Matthew Brackey.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I have provided a, we have an amendment to the invoice that was approved at the last county commission meeting for our CISO smart net renewal. CISO came back on us and with different pricing after we went to submit the original payment. The original amount was for forty-five thousand dollars, forty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents. The new amount is forty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-four cents, with the difference of two thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and eleven cents. I'm just here to request approval to have this signed away and continue all the same process under the amended value.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the payment of the difference in the invoices.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion in seconds to amend the invoice. I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, item number six is for the FY twenty twenty-five budget work sessions. I'd like to make a small amendment to either in front of you. I'd like to set the date for the work sessions for the outside budget requests, but I'd like to hold off on setting the orders for the department heads until maybe the next meeting. But that first meeting in May for the outside budget request, that would be May sixth. That's the first of the day, Monday in May.
So to make sure we get this correct, May sixth is going to be the first time you want...
That would be for the outside, outside, yeah.
Starting to pick up the conversation a whole way, so...
Does this... How soon do you think it will set, AD?
We don't have to get it set super soon. I just don't want to be locked into those, to those dates just yet for the department heads.
Do we have a list of all the outside agencies that we would have to kind of ask for budget requests?
Yeah, we do have a history of that. Amy keeps very good records of, so yes, we do have this.
My thought on this is... With recent things that we've done here, particularly the wage, the wage adjustment that we've proved in the amount of money that that, that that used in the budget to do that, I think we need to take a pretty hard look at how much money we're, how much money we're putting out annually to outside budget requests. And I, you know, I think some of those, some of those, of course, are required, statutory required. I mean, with your, with your affair, for instance, or your extension council, or extension office, that kind of thing. I really think not all are, and maybe we ought to be making a closer look at that.
Yep.
We're gonna need to figure out ways to...
Take care of that, take care of that number that we took on. Yep. So on May sixth, you want outside agencies on that date? I think that should work as a schedule.
That would just be a work session.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I don't know what that would be. Bother anyone? Normal commission day. You want us to discuss the fifteenth and the twenty-third as well?
No, not yet.
Okay. Do you need to think for us like this? Because if we just go with work session, it's just before the meeting?
Right.
So like at two-thirty?
Or we kind of split, we half split them up in half, so I don't know if you're gonna get everybody all at one date.
Right.
Depending on that meeting you have.
Right, and I guess...
Yeah, I'm okay if we just table this, hold the whole item until the next meeting too. Okay, that might work better for us.
I make a motion to table this item. Okay. I'll second that. So we have a motion second to table this item to the next meeting. So with a motion second, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The upcoming meeting, we have the annual chamber banquet, that will be March first. The Boot Hill Casino Resort Conference Center, that will start at six. We highly encourage department heads to attend that, along with elected officials and county commissioners. We have Doc City United Tapica, that'll be March fifth, twenty twenty-four. That'll be at Hotel Tapica. That will begin at five-thirty PM. We highly encourage department heads, commissioners. We have the Three Eyes Show, that's March fourteenth to the sixteenth. That will be at the Expo Center. We have the Southwest Kansas Highway Association Meeting from nine to three, March twentieth, at the Expo. We have the Annual Township Meeting from ten-thirty AM to one, that's March twenty-first, also at the Expo. If you are a department head, please feel free to attend. Have you had some election information to move?
Today is the last day to register to vote or to request your ballot by mail for the March nineteenth presidential conference primary. February twenty-eighth will be when ballots are mailed out. March fourth, we will begin in-office voting from nine to four-thirty. We have evening voting, March twelfth and fourteenth, until seven. We have a Saturday voting, March sixteenth. In-office voting will end at noon on March eighteenth, and March nineteenth is election day. Polls are open seven to seven.
All right. All right, so next up is an executive session, and this is a discussion of data relating to the financial affairs of a corporation. So I would move that the board recess into an executive session to discuss the contract with Western Kansas Manufacturing Association for the Three Eyes Show pursuant to the discussion of data relating to the financial affairs of a corporation, exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA seven-five-four-three-one-nine-B-four. How long do we need for this?
I would say start with fifteen minutes.
Okay.
I think that should be all right.
So we start in just a few minutes and try and do... To resume here, so let's go to four-twenty-five. In addition to the commissioners, the county administrator, assistant county administrator, county counselor, assistant county counselor, expo director, Eddie Estes, shall be included in the executive session. expo director, Eddie Estes, shall be included in the executive session. That's my motion. Second. With a motion second, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay, so we're back out of executive session, and we need a few more minutes to go back in, so I would say let's do another ten minutes of, um, executive session, so let's, let's redo this at four-forty. So I make a motion that we adjourn the executive session to discuss the contract with Western Kansas Manufacturing Association for Three-Eyes Show pursuant to the discussion of data relating to the financial affairs of a corporation. Exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act, KSA seven-five-four-three-one-nine-V-two. And this meeting to resume at this location at four-forty. In addition to the commissioners, the county administrator, assistant county administrator, county counselor, expo director, and Eddie Estes in the executive session. So I make that a motion.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion second, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, so we're coming out of the executive session, and we do have something we want to take action on. So we have a contract in front of us for the, um, Three-Eyes Show, or otherwise known as Western Kansas, Kansas Manufacturing Association. So we would like to, or we, I would make a motion to approve the contract for the Western Kansas Manufacturing Association for the Three-Eyes Show with one change in the contract to paragraph five on page three to be an amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion second, any further discussion on that? Hearing done.
I'll tell you one thing better, I'll just tell you, Al Brown and I am a full five. Good job.
Okay. All right. So I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, so up next is a second executive session, and this is an attorney and client privilege. So I, I motion that we move the board into recess to an executive session to discuss reconsideration of a conditional use permit granted for the development of a micro data center campus on January sixteenth of twenty twenty-four. Pursuant to the attorney-client privilege, exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA seven-five-four-three-one-nine-V-two. How long do we need for this? I think. Let's go with fifteen to start. Fifteen, okay. So we'll start back here. Let's go five-oh-five. So in addition to the commissioners, um, we'd like the county administrator, the assistant county administrator, the county counselor, the director of planning and zoning, and Shane Laws to be included.
By phone.
By phone.
And Michael Cantu, the Stellar Forge?
Michael, what's your last name?
Uh, K-A-N-T-U.
Okay.
C-A-N-T-U.
Yep, and we'll add Michael Cantu with Stellar Forge to be included in the executive session.
Awesome.
So that was a motion. Sorry.
I would second the motion.
All right, we have a motion second, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-oh-five. All right, we're back out of executive session, and I would make a motion that we move right back into executive session uh, to discuss reconsideration of a conditional use permit granted for development of a micro data center campus on January sixteenth of twenty twenty-four pursuant to the attorney-client privilege, exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA seven-five-four-three-one-nine-V-two. The meeting to resume at this location at five-twenty. In addition to the commissioners, the county administrator, assistant county administrator, county counselor, director of planning and zoning, uh, and Michael Cantu of Stellar Forge, I'd make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion second, any further discussion? Hearing done, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-twenty, yeah.
In front of the camera.
Okay, we're back out of executive session, and that will end that executive session. And we are looking at one more. No action. So this third executive session, um, I would move that we move the board into an executive session to discuss safety and security measures at Ford County Government Center pursuant to the attorney-client privilege, exception to the motion, sorry, Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA seven-five-four-three-one-nine-V-two. The open meeting to resume at this location. I would say, I'm gonna start with fifteen. Okay, so we'll go with five-forty. In addition to the commissioners, the county administrator, the assistant county administrator, the county counselor, and architect Dana Williamson to be included in the executive session. So that would be my motion.
We also have an engineer via, via team.
We also have an engineer via team, so there's a TV in here. There's the motion.
Second.
So a motion second, I would call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, we are back out of executive session. There's no action on this one. Last up is a motion to adjourn.
I shall move.
I will second that. With motion seconds, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those in the seats, we still have a fireboard meeting.